And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, what I'm going to ask for a motion to approve, but I'd like to withdraw item nine from the agenda. And then I might juggle item eight around a little bit depending on when Commissioner Poppins gets on the phone since I think we've got a lot of people here for that. But we'll see how that plays out. So with that, I would consider a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you. Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll still move.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to the opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to address the commission? I'm hearing a microphone. Who's on? Commissioner Poppins, are you with us? Seeing none and hearing none, we'll move on to the commissioner report for information purposes only. Are there any commissioners that would like to say something?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Saturday night, the Lincoln County Fairground Foundation had its second fundraiser for building the 4-H buildings out there. And it was absolutely well-attended event, and they did a really good job. Hopefully, they're raising a lot of money out there for their 4-H buildings. But I will tell you this, I was absolutely surprised pleasantly by how many people were out there. There must have been at least 150, maybe 200 people at the fundraiser. So very well-attended, and I guess it just speaks very highly of our 4-H program and the parents and the kids. And so they're doing good things out there.
Awesome.
I also want to tell you that Commissioner Gibbons and I left a few dollars on the auction. One of them, we will be presenting back to you as a plaque that you can hang on the wall, which drew a lot of high bidding. Short story between that and between Commissioner Gibbons and I. Unfortunately, I won, meaning I got to pay, so.
All right. Commissioner Poppins?
Yes, good morning.
Did you have anything you'd like to report?
No, that's fine. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and move on to regular business. We have a public hearing set for 8:35, so we have a couple of minutes. Just wondering, I'd like to move item eight, if we think we can get it done, up to the front of the line. We had our public hearing on that at the last commission meeting. We're not taking any public comment today. We tabled that item for rezoning a portion of property legally described as the north half of the northeast quarter, Section 18, from the I-1 light industrial to the I-2 general industrial. We had a motion to approve the rezone and a second. And so I think it's time for us to go ahead and call that roll call vote. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Hold on.
There's been no motion to take it off the table yet, has there?
Oh, okay.
I was just going to ask, what are we voting on?
It'd be item eight. So we did have a motion and a second, and then we tabled it. So Bill, we need to take it off the table first, right?
Correct.
Okay. Well, then I would consider a motion to take that off of the table.
I was the individual that put that back on. And the reason that I wanted to do that was to go back and check all of the concerns that had been registered, and also to look at safeguards that could be in place. So while this may not be a very popular situation, but after talking to our planning and zoning director, and after listening to what he had to say about what a conditional use permit can cover, I looked over the concerns that each of the individuals that have expressed their concerns on this. And this isn't an easy situation. I want you to know that.
Commissioner Schmidt, could we?
But so consequently, I will, I will move.
Can we take this off the table first?
Hang on, one moment, one moment. I know everybody wants to rush this thing through. I will move that we remove this from the table for an active vote.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion's off the table. We do have a first motion and a second motion to approve the rezone. Commissioner Schmidt, you were speaking, so I'll give the floor back to you.
I really don't, I, upon my vote, I'm going to move that in addition to this, that our planning and zoning director immediately work with the citizens of Worthing to make sure that their concerns are understood and covered by a potential conditional use permit for this piece of property.
So is it, are we ready to vote, then? Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, so I think, Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
I understand what Commissioner Schmidt was saying. He wanted to make a motion, but there's already a motion on the table.
Correct.
So I don't know if he was just speaking rhetorically.
No, this was just.
Yeah. Yeah, I get it. So I just want to say a few things, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So I looked, went back last night, read through all of the materials that had been submitted to the commission, read through all the paperwork documents. I want to thank all the citizens of the community who gave their testimony. I think it was very respectful, and it comes from the heart, and they care very much about their community. There were 300-plus people who signed a petition. So they're pretty concerned about this. And that means, and we took an extra week to consider this as well. So I think having the opportunity to take that extra week was very helpful, given the fact that there's so much interest in this. I went back and read through the county's comprehensive plan. And this is, this is an interesting line. This was written a number of years ago, but it said, "Lincoln County is expected to grow to a population of between 45,891 and 48,986 by the year 2025." And here we are in 2021, and the Census Bureau estimates are somewhere around, you know, I'm kind of gaming this a little bit, 66,000 to 68,000. So we've blown past that estimate in terms of our comprehensive plan. And I've had a number of conversations with Toby Brown Planning and Zoning about this. We, you know, we do need to update our comprehensive plan for the future. One of the things I was frustrated about in this process is clearly, I don't think that we have the mechanisms in place to account for, we don't have the best mechanisms in place to account for the kind of future growth that's, that we're seeing right now. Because we, this is one of those prime examples in, that is particular to this area of the state, and Lincoln County in particular, where the ag community hits the urban community or prospective urban growth and development, i.e. from the city of Worthington. Worthing, excuse me. Keep saying Worthington. I grew up in Little Rock, Iowa. So I grew, grew up close to Worthington, Minnesota. My apologies. But I'm reading through the comprehensive plan here and noticed that issue. So I don't think our comprehensive plan is in the best position to be able to account for some of these things. But a couple of the other things, and this is the one thing I wanted to point out, is land use, location and design criteria. In rural, commercial and industrial areas, because this is a rezoning from, or two, I guess, from light I-1 to I-2 industrial. And in our comprehensive plan, what we have here for rural, commercial, industrial areas is development limited by availability of services, buffering from adjacent commercial and industrial uses, adequate wastewater systems. And then, under commercial industrial, it goes on to say agriculturally related businesses. And I'm reading from page, pages 40 and 41. Commercial industrial, agriculturally related businesses, and these are just bullet points. Adjacent to county and state highways, necessary rail access for industrial uses, controlled access onto major roadways, adequate buffering from neighboring uses, convenient siting of commercial uses for customers, hard surface driveways and parking areas. Well, what we have here is, this piece of land is adjacent to a county and state highway. In fact, it's adjacent to the interstate. The rail access is not applicable. Controlled access onto major roadways, that is something that could probably be dealt with through a conditional use permit. Adequate buffering from neighboring uses can be dealt with through a conditional use permit. Convenient siting of commercial uses for customers, it's not really a retail store per se. And hard surface driveways and parking areas, that is also something that has to be dealt with through a conditional use permit. But one of the issues that we find in our comprehensive use plan is the policy of attempting to make these kinds of industrial or commercial industrial uses comport with, with agribusiness. And I think in this instance, we have a agribusiness purported use that wants to site on land that is currently zoned as I-1 and wants to move to I-2. And so I think the use, or at least the rezone, excuse me, is consistent with our comprehensive plan. I know that that is not what the folks from Worthing want to hear. But at the same time, we had three attorneys come in here, two of them for the opponents, and I listened very carefully to what they said last time, and neither one of them said that this could not be done. What they said is, there were perhaps better ways to do it. And I think with regard to some of the better ways to do it, those are things that can be taken care of through the conditional use permit process. Again, like I said, read through all of the concerns that folks had from the last meeting, went through my notes. Many of those concerns are conditional use permit type activities that can be controlled or mitigated through that process. And the one thing I would say to the applicants here is, get, I hope, I hope you are prepared to work with the community and to work with county zoning and planning and zoning, because there are a lot of concerns that are going to come at you through that conditional use permit process. And it's not just going to be penny ante concerns. It is going to be significant. It is going to be substantial, from what I heard. And, you know, we got a process here where this, this, the applicant has bounced around from three different locations, and now they're on the fourth location. And I've been involved in those processes where an applicant is starting to get towards the end, and they just want to get it done. And I think from my perspective, I'm not interested in wanting to appease their lack of ability to find a location. But in this instance, their application does seem to comport with the condition, or with our comprehensive use plan. In particular, agribusiness. You know, we have a very generous process in this county for the siting of agribusinesses. And when you look at under, under the different factors we have, their rezoning request does seem to comport with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaron's. I'm going to keep this moving. We do have to get done by 9:00 a.m. for that second item agenda, so I'd like to move this along. Any further discussion on the motions that are on the board?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, but please keep it very brief, because I want to circle back and get item one done before the Zoom meeting.
Sure. I'd like to say that I appreciate Commissioner Aaron's take on this and his evaluation of it. I think there's some good points there. At the same time, as a District Two representative, I do realize, and as an agricultural producer and a livestock producer, a year ago, we were in quite a different situation with COVID and many of these so-called packing plants that were closing, and where to go with our animals. And yet, at the same time, the processing plants, from the data and so forth that I read, were able to weather the storm much better than, than most of these packing plants and remained open, and it was a vital part. They're, they're very popular right now, and so on and so forth. But at the same time, I must re-confer that I also represent five municipalities in District Two, and Worthing is one of them. And there's an awful lot of people that are not happy that this is going to be stuck into their backyard and they actually receive zero tax dollars from it. Most of it going, of course, to Lincoln County and to the Lenox School District and to Lynn Township. I have not heard from one producer in my district that, hey, this is something that we gotta have. I haven't heard from the Lenox School District that said, this is something that we gotta have. I've received none of that information. And I think that's quite interesting as well. The infrastructure leading to this location is less than adequate. It's unsatisfactory. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I realize there's things in our comprehensive plan that approve this, but at the same time, there still is logic and common sense that needs to come into place. And I admire the people in the Worthing municipality who are putting efforts on quality of life versus, I guess, some of the other factors that we're talking about today. So with that in mind, I know this commission has dealt with other issues with quality of life on other sections of this county. And we have to, again, listen to some of those matters as well. So I want to, people to understand that when they do hear my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gibbon. I'm going to ask, Sean, would you please call the roll on the, on the motions that are pending?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. We're going to move on to item one. Toby, are you going to tee that up for us? Thank you.
This is a petition from Gene Pesca and Darren Hagie. They are property owners here, shown on the screen. They are petitioning to vacate the right-of-way or the alley that is adjacent to their property. This is the subject platted alleyway through the property. Both petitioners own property on both sides of the platted, platted right-of-way or platted alleyway in this case. Location of this, as you can see, this is subdivision, is the Fountain Estate subdivision. It is adjacent to the city of Harrisburg. This is the Harrisburg city limits here. This petition has been submitted to the auditor's office. This is a scheduled public hearing for this petition. Petition is in conformance to a state statute. Staff does recommend approval of this petition. Upon approval of petition, the applicants have a pending plat with the city of Harrisburg, which would vacate, then essentially, or what the vacated would combine, the two, would combine the subject parcels that they own and would combine them into one parcel. So again, staff does recommend approval of this. This is a public hearing, and the petitioners are in attendance this morning if you have any questions.
Thank you. Applicant is here. Do you want to come up and state your name and address and tell us what the plan is? And you don't have, you don't have to say much. I think Toby probably covered it, but go for it.
My name is Gene Pesca, live in 27202, Boston Circle. And my property is the one adjacent to the gravel over there. This is something that, quite honestly, was, I bought the property in 2003, and when I bought that property, that alleyway and stuff like that was supposed to have been vacated and everything at that point. And quite honestly, as far as there is, we've checked with Lincoln County title and stuff like that, all the records of that have been destroyed because they said there was a flood that had took place there. So we are kind of left here, and we just came on this here, my neighbor Darren Hagie and I just came up on this here, probably in the last six months, finding out that there's an issue here. So I guess, I think we've produced all the evidence or everything that we needed to give. The HOA has granted us ownership of that and stuff, so that's about it. I wasn't prepared to speak, really.
That's all right. You did just fine, Gene.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Gene? If not, is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the application? I don't see anybody jumping up, anybody that wants to speak against the application. And I don't see anybody jumping up for that. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve.
Gene, out of curiosity, why is that, why is that even there?
Very good question. We have no idea. We have no idea why that was there. It was never used. It was never used. There was a tree grove right there. The engineer that platted it and stuff like that has passed away. So I've tried to reach out to them, and, you know, that, the guy that took over his practice, and nobody's got any records of what happened there. And here again, I believe it just some, it just fell, it was supposed to get vacated, and it fell through the cracks. And I've been trying to follow the records, stuff like that, through Lincoln County and stuff like that, and there's nothing there anymore.
Madam Chair, and as we, Gene, you and I have been down, we've seen it. I'll move for approval on that.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We do have, thank you, Gene. You bet. Good luck. We do have a Zoom call-in, and I believe there's going to be several counties attending. So I'm going to take a short break right now until 9:00, so that we can get that Zoom call set up and make sure that it's running properly.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Jake, are we ready? Okay. Well, everyone, good morning from Lincoln County. We are privileged today to have with us our CEO and Matt Chase from NACO, who has taken time out of his busy schedule to share with us how the counties are going to be able to use the COVID money that we have available for us. So consequently, Matt, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I would want to, I thank you especially for taking time out of your busy schedule, because I know what that looks like, to share with the counties, because there is a definite interest in how they're going to be better utilizing that funds that are one-time funds that are available, and there are multiple of needs and there are multiple of ideas. So I thought we would go directly to the source and hear it from you as to how we can put that to the best use. So Matt, I will give you the floor. And one other thing, I know there will be questions, and if we do have questions, you want to put them in the chat room, and we do not have time for those. I've been assured that if you put your question and your name and address, that NACO will address all of those individually and provide you with the answers if we don't get a chance to cover them today. So Matt, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. It's great to see you virtually, and want to thank you and also Commissioner Robert Hill, who serve on the NACO board and represents South Dakota counties, with the National Association of Counties, and of course, to Bob and Chris at the State Association. Thank you for your partnership. I'm going to dive right in and, and really get into what's called the American Rescue Plan. It is now the law of the land. President Biden did sign it into law, so it's no longer a concept, but it's actually law of the land. And before I do that, though, I want to just kind of set the framing that the role of the National Association of Counties is to be the voice of county government at the federal level, that we are part of the nation's intergovernmental system between federal, state, local and tribal officials. We are not registered lobbyists. We're actually part of the intergovernmental partnership. And I think that's really important, and particularly in these very partisan times, to remind people that our job is to promote the best interests of county governments and hopefully our local communities. And so throughout this pandemic, what we really focused on was educating our federal colleagues about the roles and responsibilities of county governments. We're focused on making sure that federal policymakers understood that our 40,000 elected officials and our 3.6 million county employees, over 1% of all Americans are employed by county governments, that you all were truly on the front lines of this pandemic. Not just the public health, but also the broader economic and community impacts. And you can see your neighbors to the north here in Cass County, North Dakota, were touting this We Are Counties campaign. And so we have really been spending a lot of time educating federal policymakers on all the different touchpoints that you all have with this pandemic. So throughout this process, Congress has, has passed four or five really key bills. And throughout the process, NACO focused on getting direct federal aid for all counties. In the earlier bills, particularly a bill called the CARES Act, the money flowed to counties 500,000 and above, and then to the governors who could voluntarily distribute down to the counties. So throughout this, we doubled down and said, no, we need the money to go directly to counties. We don't want the states playing games. We want flexibility for counties, but we also support reasonable guardrails. We understand that these are precious taxpayer dollars, and we want to make sure that they're invested, not just spent. And so we supported reasonable guardrails. So that's kind of the framing of how we got to this process. And I will tell you, going back to last summer, a lot more of the local aid was going to flow to cities, towns and townships and counties. That's why we were so aggressive in really touting the county role. We wanted to make sure we got an equal distribution. So everything that I talk about today is on the NACO COVID-19 clearinghouse. Hopefully, you can find it. We're, we're trying to change our website so you can find it a little bit easier. And what I'm going to talk about today are the state and local fiscal recovery funds. That's the official name of the U.S. Treasury money that will flow to states, tribes, territories and local governments. So if you click on the state and local fiscal recovery section, you will come to a resource hub dedicated just to this fund. We have a full analysis of the American Rescue Plan. We have the bill text. We have summaries. We have our letters that we've been sending to Treasury, following up on some of the meetings that we have on real technical questions, and we have some estimates for the county allocations. So again, the American Rescue Plan is now the law of the land. It will invest about $1.9 trillion in, across the country, and that includes everything from vaccines, COVID testing, aid for K through 12 schools, there were direct stimulus payments to all Americans below a certain income. There's economic assistance, a lot of money for childcare, and then, of course, there's this pot of money, 362 billion in direct fiscal aid for state and local governments. There's an additional 1.5 billion for public lands counties. And that's where we're going to spend our time today, is the 65.1 billion in direct federal aid to counties. So just to map out the different buckets in this $362 billion pot of money, you can see these two buckets in yellow, the 65.1 billion in direct county aid, and then the revenue share for public lands counties, which is an additional 1.5 billion. and then the revenue share for public lands counties, which is an additional $1.5 billion. But you can see here that Treasury has a lot of work to do on all of these different categories. Each subgroup has its own rules and some nuances. So Treasury really does have their hands full trying to write this guidance. So how's the money going to be divided to local governments? Again, $65.1 billion will go directly from the U.S. Treasury to county governments, including Paris and Louisiana and boroughs in Alaska. If you are one of the counties that typically gets a direct allocation from the HUD Community Development Block Grant Program, you'll get the higher of what you would get under CDBG versus the population distribution. Where people are getting confused is there is another $65.1 billion for cities, towns, and townships, villages, and smaller boroughs. For cities above 50,000, they'll get the money directly. And for those below 50,000, their allocation will go to the governor. And then the governor or the state will suballocate that down. People are getting confused on this, but again, all of the county money will go directly from the U.S. Treasury to the county. For your smaller cities, towns, and townships, their money will flow through the state. Of course, we're the National Association of Counties, so we focus on really targeting the money for the counties. We've been working with Treasury on the guidance. It could come out as early as today, but we do expect it in the next probably 10 days. And we expect Treasury to open the portal for you to register by May 10th, that I can come back to that during the Q and A. So what is the pre-award certification process? Basically, Treasury came out with a notice and said, okay, counties, get ready to work with us to receive your allocation. And to do that, you need to have a DUNES number, which is a registration with a group called Dun and Bradstreet that looks and kind of monitors different businesses. You need what's called a SAM registration from the General Services Administration, from the federal GSA. A SAM registration is essentially a federal contractor ID. So you get your DUNES number first, then you can register with GSA through the Federal Contract and Clearinghouse, and also get your banking information ready. The few counties in South Dakota that are receiving literally, you know, $20 million or so, you want to talk to your banker too to make sure your bank can handle this amount of money. You'll need your EIN number, which is your tax identification number. You'll need to identify the chief elected official for the county to actually authorize receipt of the money and to be accountable for the money. In South Dakota, it's probably your board chair in most cases. And then you'll need, again, your banking information for the wire transfer. What is very different from this program than most federal programs is you're probably used to cash flowing like FEMA, and then FEMA reimburses you. In this case, the Treasury will send you half the money upfront. And then no, earlier than a year later, so next May probably, you'll get your second tranche of money. So nationally, we've identified almost all counties have a SAM registration. There's about 116 nationwide that don't. So again, make sure you have a DUNES number and a SAM registration. I will send these slides to Chris and the South Dakota Counties Group. You can have them and you can use them. We also have some slides hidden here that can give you the step-by-step how you go through the process. Again, you know, here they are. Quickly, you, you need a DUNES number, and here's the site that you'll go to. You'll need a SAM registration, as I've mentioned. If you don't have a SAM registration right now, it can take about three weeks to get that, and it could delay your receipt of your Treasury money. We still expect that you would get it, but it may be delayed. So really follow these steps. Go to SAM.gov and either renew your registration or secure it. As I mentioned earlier, we'll, you'll need to get ready with your EIN, your banking information. And Treasury has not released the guidance yet, but we expect it literally today to within the next 10 days. They're getting very close. All right. What can you use it for? There's four main categories for eligible use of funds. There's also a couple of things that you cannot use it for, and I'll get into that in a minute. So let's step back and understand the context of this bill. It really is to help with the immediate public health crisis as well as the associated economic impacts that have occurred. So number one, Congress says you can use this money to respond to the public health emergency for COVID, including its negative economic impacts. So you can use it for assistance to households. We're still getting clarity if you could, if that would include property tax relief. We think it should include that, but we're confirming with Treasury that that would be an eligible use. You can use it for grants or loans to small businesses, to nonprofits. Congress specifically wanted to make clear that you could help industries like tourism, travel, and hospitality that have been really harmed by COVID-19. And so I want to be clear that the including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, that's not exclusive. Meaning Congress just wanted to make clear that Treasury and the recipients knew that these were eligible. It's not, it's not limited to those, but they wanted to make sure that that was clearly eligible. At the last hours of the legislative process, to get the 50 votes in the Senate, they included this provision number two, which is premium pay for essential workers. Where premium pay is defined, you can provide an additional $13 per hour, up to $13 per hour, to an eligible essential worker, both employed by the county as well as the county could suballocate money to an employer in the community to provide essential premium pay. The key on all of these are that you may. There is no requirement to provide the premium pay. It's just an eligible use. So you can provide an additional $13 per hour to any one individual, and it's also capped at $25,000 to any single eligible worker. Number three is a little bit more complicated, and this is around lost revenue, where you would go back to your full fiscal year prior to the pandemic. So whatever your full fiscal year was before March 1st, 2020, and you would benchmark your revenue versus what it is today and into the future. And you could use it to backfill lost revenue. And so this includes things like property taxes, but also if your court systems have had reductions or your parks and recs, your libraries, any other sort of user fees, you could also use it to backfill. We're still waiting for guidance from Treasury to really differentiate some of the nuances that we're expecting here. But number three, this lost revenue is intended to help you recover, obviously, lost revenue. Number four is they allow for water sewer and broadband investments. Quote, necessary investments in water sewer and broadband. The general intent here is to support infrastructure. And again, we're waiting for Treasury to issue its guidance. We've had a lot of conversations with Treasury around this, as well as broader capital infrastructure improvements. There's a lot of questions coming in from counties about can you retrofit your jails? Can you retrofit your courthouses? Can you build new public health centers? All sorts of questions around capital infrastructure, and that's been at the top of our list with our dialogue with Treasury. So what can't you use it for? Well, the number one thing that you cannot use it for is to touch any pension funds. So if you're using it for payroll support, you'll have to pull out any of your pension contributions and use county funds or other funds to use it for your pension. So that's really important. We tried to get it changed where active employees could, could use it for payroll support, including pensions. It was really a political third route, and there just wasn't any interest in changing this provision. And so we tried to explain that, you know, maybe you don't use it for pension enhancements or something. But again, it's crystal clear, you cannot use any of the Treasury funds to be deposited into a pension fund. Any failure to comply with these rules, you'll have to pay back the Treasury, and so I would really pay attention to this. The first bullet, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on unless we have Q and A, but there, there are provisions just for state governments where the state is not supposed to intentionally reduce its tax revenue and backfill it with the Treasury money. There are federal lawsuits now. Several attorneys generals have, have issued a lawsuit against this provision. It does not apply directly to counties. Where it may impact counties is if the state tries to cut your county aid through the regular state appropriations. But as far as the Treasury money goes, that provision only applies to state governments. So a couple of changes to these late provisions from earlier bills. So again, Treasury will distribute the money directly to counties. You'll have to go on, register on a portal here in probably the next 10 days. You'll have until December 31st, 2024, to spend the money. That deadline was changed from earlier bills where it really originally didn't have a deadline. So you'll have several years to spend the money. The other change was that, again, Treasury will send you 50% of the money upfront in what they call the first tranche. And then the second payment would be no earlier than 12 months after the first payment. So around mid-May of next year is what we're anticipating. There will be reporting requirements, so you'll need to set up an accounting system to track how you're spending the money. And just like anything in life, nothing is free, so there will be periodic reports. And again, we're working with Treasury on what will those reports look like. If you don't comply with any of the provisions, again, you'd have to return the money to the U.S. Treasury. The estimates. So we're estimating that just South Dakota counties, not including the states, not including your, your tribes or your other local governments, just the county governments, will receive about $171.5 million. These are not official estimates yet, but we helped Congress write the formulas. And so these should be in the ballpark of where South Dakota counties should get. You can go on our website and see the estimate. Again, I wouldn't go out and spend it yet, but you could start some planning. For some of you, it's pretty significant. For others, you can probably dedicate a little bit to your, your staff, maybe, or do a couple of projects. But again, it's, it should be helpful. I want to pivot to some other buckets of money in the bill. For those of you interested in broadband projects, your state will receive an additional allocation of money through what's called the Coronavirus Capital Projects Fund. So they'll receive at least 100 million, will probably receive more than that, to dedicate to broadband infrastructure, particularly around projects to enable work, education, and health monitoring remotely. And so if you're interested in broadband, you can use your local county dollars that you're going to receive, plus your state will have additional money for broadband. Another pot of money that will impact some of you, if you receive federal payment liens of taxes or PIL or the federal Secure Rule Schools money. Senator Rod Wyden put in an additional $1.5 billion for general purpose aid for those counties that have federal public lands. It is different than the PIL and SRS formula. They're going to come up with a new formula based on the economic conditions, public land holdings, unemployment, and some other indicators. And this money will come out later in the fall and will come in two fiscal years. Half in, in 2022 and half in 2023. And you'll see here in the second bullet that the public lands money can be used for any governmental purpose other than a lobbying activity. So it's intended to be incredibly flexible, essentially public, general purpose money. When Senator Wyden introduced this provision, he specifically directed Treasury to work with NACO and the State Association of Counties, particularly our Western Interstate region, on developing the formula. We're already talking with Treasury. We've had some good preliminary conversations. And so again, that will be additional aid on top of the other aid. So again, we've been working with Treasury every day, educating them about the roles and responsibilities of counties, the different fiscal years, your different revenue sources. And we are hopeful that, that they'll come out with guidance that's flexible and user-friendly. For you, we have what we call the NACO COVID-19 Recovery Clearinghouse, where we're bringing together the individual counties, the state associations, some of our affiliates, like the county treasurers, auditors, lawyers, working with Treasury on the guidance and on implementation ideas. On our website, you can go on the clearinghouse, and we have two submission boxes here. One is ask any question, and we have a team ready to answer and ready to work with Treasury on any of your questions. Can we spend the money on X? What is the reporting requirement here? And as Treasury comes out with the guidance, this clearinghouse will help you get your answers. The other thing that we want to do is tell the county story. How are you planning to invest this money in your community? How are you helping those maybe that are unemployed or some of your small businesses that have suffered? How are you helping build our public health resilience? What are the things that you plan to use the money for? Please help us tell the county story and make sure that we can report back to Congress that we're using this money effectively. That's really important to us here at NACO. So we are having our annual conference in person plus hybrid, July 9th through 12th. We moved it from Austin, Texas, or Travis County, Texas, to Prince George's County, right outside of DC, so that we can have a lot more federal officials at the conference this year. It will have some virtual options for most sessions, and, but we are going to be meeting in person, trying to get back to normal. And of course, trying to rebuild that partnership with the federal government through COVID to really make sure that you have access to the key decision makers. So with that, Jim, I can, I can wrap up and, you know, take any questions. I couldn't see the chat. I'll pull the chat up and see if there's anything that we should go back to.
Matt, you indicated that you thought that Treasury would be coming out with the guidelines within the next 10 days. And will that then be published on the NACO website so that counties that have plans to, I think one of the most prevalent ones, Matt, will be for building purposes. I know we've talked about infrastructure. There may be money coming from infrastructure. There may be money coming from other things. But for counties that face building, where they have to construct, redesign their courthouse, they have to build jails, they have to build facilities, do you have any feel on that, whether that will be received by Treasury as a positive way to spend the funds?
Yeah. So right now, I can't say anything with certainty. But what we are pushing Treasury for, of course, is capital infrastructure improvements tied to lessons learned from COVID. So the jails are a great example. You know, could you rebuild a jail? We don't know yet. But we have learned that jails are hotspots for, for transmission of the virus. So if you need to retrofit your jail due to COVID or just public health, we're hoping that that will be eligible. Things like roads and bridges, we're not as optimistic, but again, we're going to have to wait and see. The other thing that we are really encouraging counties to think about is how do you use the Treasury money to free up local county dollars and use your local money for other things that might be in the gray area or not allowed? So if they allow, say, payroll support for all public safety, like they did in the CARES Act, could you work with your sheriff to free up some of the sheriff's normal budget for other things? Now, I understand it's challenging. It's politics, and you got to get a lot of people on the same page. But the point being is, use the Treasury money for those things that are 100% crystal clear eligible. And if you could free up some of your general funds, and it does vary state to state on state prohibitions on using like general funds for roads and bridges, but try and free up, you know, your, your normal budget by using the Treasury money and then directing your local dollars to those things that are questionable. Does that make sense?
Makes sense. Will I open it up to see whether there are other questions that can be held at this time across the state?
And I do see some in the chat. I'll just go through them real quick, because we'll take, Mr.? That yes, we'll make this PowerPoint available. I'll send it to Chris, and we'll, we'll get it out to all of you. On the definition of essential employees, we don't know for certain what that definition will be. But we do think a good number of county employees will qualify. Again, it's up to the county if you want to provide it. It's not shall, it is may. And remember that you may have employers in your county approach you for assistance with premium pay. That also is allowed, not required. For example, I know of a couple of rural electric cooperatives that approached the county about pandemic pay for their frontline work. that approached the county about pandemic pay for their frontline workers. On the payroll issue and pensions, you're really going to need to work with your payroll providers, if you use both or in-house or if you outsource it, to separate out your salary and other fringe from the pension contribution. So some of you do obviously provide a matching, a county match for, for your retirement, your pension system. You're going to have to pull that out and do an accounting transfer, basically, so you're not using treasury money. We will probably have webinars on that and best practices and work with auditors on that. Again, it's something that we fought, but just the politics around pensions were such that there was no way we could change it.
Any questions out there? Chris, anything from the auditors?
At this point, I do not see any questions. So, thank you so much, Matt. We appreciate it and Jim.
Matt, we ended a little early. We have a pretty full schedule here in Lincoln County. But Matt, thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to deliver all that information. I think you answered several questions as to what we really know on the resources that we have and what we can expend them on. And we'll look forward to seeing from NACO what the treasury actually comes up with. So from Lincoln County to you, Matt, in DC, have a wonderful day and thank you for your information and your time.
Thank you. Just, just real quick, I want to thank all the South Dakota counties. You're all members of NACO. I also want to just do a very quick shout out that it's been so impressive to watch. We've had 83 county participants from 40 counties in the NACO High Performance Leadership Academy, our online leadership program with General Colin Powell. And I just think that's an impressive showing and the commitment to leadership development by South Dakota counties. So thank you. And also just on this treasury money or any other federal programs, call on us. You know, we're here to work for you. We, you have an open door and just reach out to us, call us, email us, and we'll get back to you soon as possible. So thank you.
Matt, I have one question.
Okay.
We have one question.
One question for you, Matt. I know that you're sending out the PowerPoint, but I noticed the meeting's being recorded. Can the recording be sent out so that we can play a full portion of it?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Jake, thank you. Without you, this would never have been possible. So, thank you. Madam Chair, we ended four minutes early.
All right. That was all really good information. We're going to move on to item three on our agenda, which is public hearing.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of adopting the following supplements to the 2021 budget. Supplement adding $800 in account 2334331, $871.83 in account 233366, $306.78 in account 2334322411, $23.47 in account 2334322412, $1,375 in account 2334322425, $336.31 in account 2334322428, $19,991.08 in account 10137100, and the same amount in account 233491100000. And if you would like, I would like to explain those so that they make a little more sense.
Please do that.
All right, so first I'll go through the revenues. We had some garbage hauler license paid in 2021. They're going to start going into the general fund. And just so everybody's on the same page, all of these budget supplements are to clean up the budget for the transfer station. So that's, that's what this is all for, is to make that nice and tidy. So the $800 in 2334331 is garbage hauler licenses paid in 2021. And they're going to start going into the general fund now. The other revenue is for 233366. That is a refund from a prior year expense from the city of Sioux Falls tipping fees. So it's my understanding that there was just pay, payment being made and that we were, we're always taking garbage there. And this was a refund from overpayment from the year prior, from the city of Sioux Falls. So then we have four expenditures. These are wages and expenses paid. These are the 2334322 accounts, which are the 411, the 412, 425, and the 428. So its salaries and wages was the $306.78, the OASI for $23.47, repairs and maintenance for $1,375, and utilities paid for $336.31. And then those last two items for the $19,991.08. This is giving budget authority for the transfer of cash that is actually item four. And so that's to move that cash to the general fund instead of having it present with the transfer station.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? If not, this is a public hearing. We need to put this out for anybody to speak.
Yes.
All right. Anybody here to speak in favor of the supplement requests? Is there anybody here to speak against the supplement requests? I don't see anybody and I don't hear anybody on that issue. So if not, I would consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the supplements to the 2021 budget as per what is stated in the agenda and what was read off by Sean today.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Go ahead, Sean.
He's no longer with us, okay. Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. I'll go ahead and move on to item four, which is related item.
It is. So this is to approve the now budgeted cash transfer from the transfer station to the general fund in the amount of that $19,991.08 that we just gave budget authority for.
So move, Mr. Chairman, on the transfer?
Thank you, thank you. Got a motion by Schmidt, a second by Commissioner Aaron's. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item number five. Who's handling that?
I can handle that.
All right.
This is to award the bid for the lease of the farmland located within the northeast quarter of Section 36, Township 100, range 51 west of the Fifth Prime Meridian, except the west 370.42 feet. Of the east, 2,132.8 feet. Of the north, 823.17 of Lincoln County, South Dakota, but not including the temporary easement on the north end consisting of 142,911 square feet from May 4th to December 31st, 2021. This was re-advertised as requested by the board for a one-year lease instead of a two-year lease. It received one bid that did come with a note. If you would permit me to read that for you.
Please do so.
The bid amount was for $3,900 from Alan R. Ripentrop. And the note says, Sean Philmyer, Deputy Auditor, only 30 acres of the 154 acres are tillable, thus the low bid. Also, thousands of cubic dirt can be removed. Please take these factors into consideration. Thank you, Alan Ripentrop.
Madam Chair, I'd move for approval of his application or his bid for that farmland.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Item number six. We have a first reading.
Sorry. This is a first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as a portion, approximately 10 acres, northwest half of the northwest quarter, except H1 and north 211.5 feet of east 412 feet. Section 33, Township 100 North, R49 West from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommendation for approval failed zero to five.
Good morning. Again, this is an application from Matthew Roach to rezone, as was just stated, approximately 10 acres of the subject property. The 10 acres would be right at the intersection of 272nd Highway 11. Location of this property is approximately two miles to the east of the city of Harrisburg. The concept plan that was submitted with the application states that the applicant would subdivide the property and would subdivide it into eight lots. These eight lots would be utilized then in the future for conditional use for contractor shops. Mr. Roach is part of Pride Built Homes. He would utilize one of the sites for his business and then the rest would be sold. This application, as you're aware, was brought before you approximately a little over a year ago. That was denied by the Board of Commissioners at that time. Since then, the applicant has moved the driveway further to the, to the east and then has identified, as you can see on the screen, that there would be a substantial stormwater detention on the property. Again, this property, like the last time, is within the city of Harrisburg's subdivision authority. So they have sole jurisdiction over the site improvements of the property. The applicant has submitted a concept plan. It's in the process of working with the city of Harrisburg in a preliminary plan. I did include the notes that the city of Harrisburg staff submitted to the applicant, identified a number of things that would have to be addressed with the application. So this is all conceptual. As part of the staff analysis, I include the staff report. The comprehensive plan for Lincoln County, as you're aware, the city of Harrisburg has updated their comprehensive plan and has identified growth areas beyond their current urban expansion area, which isn't shown in our comprehensive plan. So the county's comprehensive plan identifies this area as future agricultural. However, the city of Harrisburg, again, updated their comprehensive plan. They have identified this area as future industrial. So this use would be future commercial, which would be a less intensive type use. There is quite a significant amount of neighborhood opposition to this application. I just talked to the applicant late last week and he is going out and meeting with a number of the neighbors in that area. Number of the concerns that they have is, again, changing in the character of this particular area. There is no commercial within probably a mile of this site that's been zoned or utilized or utilized for that purpose. And then also the concern with the potential drainage impacts of this site, which again, Planning Commission spent a lot of time talking about, but the county does not have jurisdiction or control or development over drainage on this particular piece of property because it falls within the city of Harrisburg. This is the first reading for this application. So again, no public comment, but you can ask many questions that you have. You have scheduled the second reading and public hearing for this at your next meeting, which will be on the 25th. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Toby, the Planning and Zoning Board voted zero to five to not to approve?
Yeah, they did an affirmative motion on the application and then that, that motion failed, zero to five.
Okay.
The recommendation of it, yes.
Thank you. I think, you know, for questions and things of that nature, maybe those are better left for the second reading. So I would just ask that we go ahead and move on to item seven.
Item seven is the first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as Aggie's Track 1, except lots one and two. West half, southwest quarter, Section 11, Township 100 North, R49 West from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of the area of joint jurisdiction. The county Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. The city Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero.
Okay, it's just stated this is an application from John Aggie, but I'll say it's the entire Aggie family. And so it's, this is a subject property is approximately just under 40 acres in size. Subject property is about 2,500 feet to the south of where the city of Sioux Falls limits end, which is on the north side of 57th Street in Minnehack County side. This subject property, and I'll, I'll show you the concept. This is in the Indian Hills area and then the Riverside subdivision area, which is just to the, at the intersection of County Highway 135 and 102. The concept plan that was submitted with the application identifies that, that the property will be, once rezoned to rural residential, would be subdivided into conceptually 25 lots at this time. As part of your approval, you will also be considering the preliminary subdivision plan. And so again, the preliminary subdivision plan is very basic engineering at this stage. And so as we go through further engineering and approval of it, there might be one or so lots that might get identified for detention on the property. But the conceptual would be 25 residential lots on that property. As mentioned, this is in the joint jurisdictional area. So we look for guidance to the Shape Sioux Falls comprehensive plan, which is the comprehensive plan for the joint jurisdictional area. Up until a few months ago, this property was identified as a tier-three future residential property, which in layman's terms means that according to the city's guidelines, that the developer would have had to extend infrastructure out approximately a mile from where it currently exists now. So the applicant did work with city engineering staff. They reanalyzed the sewer basins and identified that this area is outside of a 25-year future growth development area. So for, for, again, layman's terms is that the city of Sioux Falls does not see themselves getting out here for infrastructure for 25 years plus, if any, at that point in time. So staff, again, has reviewed the preliminary plan, submittal, as well as the rezoning. It is in conformance with the land use plan for the city of Sioux Falls, which identifies this as future residential. Again, as Sean did mention, the Planning Commission did recommend approval. This is the first reading. Again, no public comment. You have scheduled the second reading for May 25th. That will be at 7:00 at Carnegie Hall at City of Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move on to item 10. We removed item nine. And item 10, Julia?
Good morning. What I'd like to do this morning is give you a couple of factors, some data, some information about, for the commission to consider about staff increases for 2022. And then I'd like to let that information digest, so to speak, and then circle back around next week. And the auditor's asking for an initial percentage increase for the budget as of next week. Does that sound okay?
Sure.
Okay.
With the request, yes.
Okay. Some factors for your consideration to consider or for the commission to consider is first, CPIU.
When you say, when you say next week, we don't have a meeting next week. Or wait, yeah, we do. I'm thinking of the next week. Never mind, you're right.
I'm like, do we? Okay.
No, you're right.
Gotcha. Some items for your consideration. CPIU for the Midwest region for the end of March was 2.9%. What that means is the cost of goods increased over last year by 2.96%. So that's the first factor for your consideration. The second is market. Now, there's a lot of talk about what market means. And market can mean a lot of different things to a lot of different organizations. But for our purposes here at Lincoln County, Jake, would you mind doing this? Showing this? Or do I need to do that? Oh, thank you. For our purposes here at Lincoln County, we did a compensation study roughly two years ago. And in that compensation, the commission approved these 13 organizations as comparable entities. So what that means is each year, we go out to these organizations and talk about what they did for increase- we go out to these organizations and talk about what they did for increases to make sure that we're comparable in the marketplace. So as you can see, these range in sizes, in demographics, all of the things. But the hope, the strategy behind this is that you take 13 different organizations and no two organizations are alike. So Lincoln County is not going to be like any of these. However, the hope is that you get somewhere close by comparing to 13 different organizations. So with that, when compiling that information, the average of increases for last year for those entities was 2%. Lincoln County gave 1%. Next factor is collective bargaining units. The commission agreed and approved a 3.25% increase for those covered underneath that unit. So those that are currently certified receive the 3.25% increase. They received that last year and will receive that again for the next two years. Other factors for your consideration. Commissioner Aaron's, I think you said it best earlier is that there's significant growth occurring. I think through the courthouse study, that's no surprise to anyone. In the courthouse study, it came out that 50 new positions are soon to be needed within the next 10 years, which is an approximate increase of 30%. Next is staff turnover and attrition. In 2020, I alluded to this in a previous presentation, but in 2020, our turnover rate was 17%, which is nearly double from the previous year. Currently, in the first quarter alone, we have 6% turnover this year. If we stay on track, that will be 24% turnover for this year, which is nearly three times as much as two years ago. So another piece of that is demographics. I took a look at the demographics of where our staff is at. As of right now, 20% of our employees are at the age of early retirement. 20%. So at any given moment, depending on their financial situation, these individuals could retire. From a more national standpoint, there's two very reputable organizations that say this isn't just a Lincoln County situation. This isn't just a South Dakota situation. But because of COVID and all of the happenings behind that and what a challenging time that was, they're calling 2021 a turnover tsunami or the great COVID churn. And what they're forecasting is that turnover, regardless of the organization, is going to significantly increase. So take Lincoln County out of the picture. Take our current turnover situation out of the picture, but they anticipate this to be a concern. As a point of comparison, last time this year, we posted 10 positions. Right now, as of today, we've posted 20. That is a 200% increase of open positions within our organization. That is huge. Next, local and national unemployment rate. At the end of March 2021, Lincoln County came in at an unemployment rate of 2.5%. While South Dakota was at 2.9, the national unemployment rate is at 6.8%. To take this a step further, I reached out to our contact at Kelloland. And in Kelloland alone, they have roughly 2,300 jobs available on that site alone. So that doesn't take into account the ZipRecruiter, the Indeed, the other advertising agents that are out there. From a larger perspective, more global perspective, South Dakota has 23,000 positions available. What that says is applicants can be more selective in the opportunities they choose. I'll give you just a recent example of, and maybe this will hit a little closer to home, is we posted a position. We posted the position for roughly four weeks, which is pretty typical. We had seven applicants. We extended three interviews. Of those three interviews, one individual took a job opportunity. Another person didn't return the phone call. The third position person we interviewed were impressed with extended an offer, but ultimately didn't select the position because of the pay. So now, in an already tight job market, we don't have an applicant. So based on all of this information, it's my recommendation for a staff or matrix increase for 2022 to be 2.5% to 3.25% for staff for 2022. One point I neglected to mention is that, just for historical purposes, when we did the compensation study two years ago, we implemented the study at that point based on expert's opinion. And by doing that, we implemented the study. And being good stewards of county taxpayer dollars, the commission said, okay, we're going to implement the study, but because of financial restraints, we're not going to give the market increase because it was a big undertaking from a financial standpoint. So Jake, would you mind switching back over again? Thank you very much. So here, this graph indicates 2%. The consultant recommended a 2% increase at that point. And because of financial restraints, Lincoln County wasn't able to give that 2%. So we're 2% behind market at that point. Moving to the next year, which is last year, market suggested that we give a 2% to 3% increase. My recommendation was 2%. The commission was supportive, and because of financial restraints, we were only able to give one, and that left us behind by 1% there. So that just gives a graph of what we've done in the past. This line here represents turnover. So as the person, all of this information, as the person who oversees staffing and recruitment, I'm concerned. I'm concerned for Lincoln County to keep up with market and to find the number and the quality of people that we need. I mean, Commissioner Aaron's, to your point again, Lincoln County is experiencing significant growth. I think we've all said that time and time again. But with growth comes more needs from the county. With more needs comes more staffing to ensure that we're able to carry out those needs, those projects, those different tasks. But to get the people, we got to ensure that we can pay them and stay competitive within the marketplace. So I worked with Sheri on these numbers. And lastly, I'll just leave you with this, is that if the commission is supportive of giving a 3.25% increase, that would be approximately 0.71% of the annual budget. So respectfully, after all of this information, I ask that you make these increases in the wage information to stay competitive within the marketplace a priority for 2022. Questions for me?
Julia, what's the real dollar amount of of a 2.5 to 3.25%?
The difference between those?
Yeah.
$50,000.
Okay. And then, so what is the dollar amount at 2.5?
I believe this is off the cuff, but it's about $169,000.
And do you know what 3.25 is?
Off the cuff, I think it's...
It'd be 169 plus 50, 319? No.
219.
219.
Commissioner, run those numbers again, would you please?
Yeah, so a 2.5% increase will be an expenditure of 169,000. If you go to 3.25, it'll be an expenditure of 219,000. That's above and beyond what we're currently paying.
2% was 159?
2.5
Yep.
is 169.
Yep.
3.25
Okay.
is 219.
Thank you.
Other questions?
And then Julia, just a point of clarification, because a lot of people came to me after that meeting. Just so the public knows, the projected position growth of like that 50 employees,
Yeah.
that's based upon requests made by the various department heads.
Correct.
And it's a forecast of what they think they'll need in the future. And just wanted to let the public know that.
Yeah, that's fair.
That's where that number came from.
Yep.
Julia, we gave a 1% increase, and that was on top of the step raise, right?
No.
No.
1%. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
1% is just for the matrix adjustment.
Yep.
Or the COLA, as some people call it. They're different, but similar.
So they got their increment raise, step raise.
They got their performance raise.
And then the 1% on top of that.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Okay.
Other questions?
And you're recommending a 2.5 to 3.25 increase, correct?
Correct. And that strictly depends on your strategy as a commission. So if you want to be consistent with the collective bargaining unit, then I would encourage you to do the 3.25%.
You mentioned that of the number of counties that you utilize.
Yeah.
They gave an average increase of 2%?
2.96 was the average. Or that was the CPU.
Yeah. But the counties overall that you sampled, those, what, a dozen or so? They were at 2%, right?
Last year, 2%.
Last year. Okay.
And we were at 1, right?
Correct.
Julia, how many positions do we currently have open?
Five. Now, open and in process are two different things. So open is probably five. In process, I know there's at least 13 people in the recruitment process.
So five positions are open, which means they've been advertised, and we're trying to fill them. And the 13 means what again, in the process?
So the five open positions means they're out on the website, and we're currently seeking applications.
Yes.
And then the recruitment process, the position is closed or we're currently recruiting for it, and they're in some sort of the process. Like for deputy sheriff, we're starting interviews.
We've stopped taking applications, and now we're doing all the other administrative stuff to...
The good stuff.
And there are 13 of those.
Good questions. Anything else?
Have we had, Julia, in the recruitment process where we have found a person that would fill the position and has turned it down because of the wages that are paid by the county?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I'll say, I mean, to be fair about the whole situation is you're not always going to get every applicant, right? But when you consistently see a pattern, that's when it becomes a concerning, especially when you have a 2.5% unemployment rate and everybody is trying to get the same people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Julia. Question for Mr. Golden. Do you want us to have our executive session as our board? Or would you like us to go ahead and take recess and go into the other two? And then come back and do the executive and adjourn? Mr. Hauser's been sitting here for quite a while, so I... I can just do a recess, correct? Okay. So right now, what I'd like to do is a recess on our regular commission agenda. And then I would like to open a regular meeting for our, to reconvene as a consolidated board. I know we said the Pledge of Allegiance earlier today, but we're going to say it again. So if you'll join me, please. Other than, we need an executive session with our state's attorney's office.
Madam Chair, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, Sub 1 and Sub 3 and Sub 4.
I second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Great. I consider a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
I second it.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Consider a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.